to order. I ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we pause to give thanks for the many blessings of this day, Lord, and we ask now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton. For it's in your great name, we pray. Amen. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, we do, Mayor. It's going to be requested that item five B be removed from this agenda, and we will reschedule that for a future date. And additionally, that two ordinances, 2022-01 and 03, be added to the consent agenda. Both those ordinances are regarded to budget amendments that had been previously approved, and this will just finalize that action.
Okay, I have that noted on the agenda. Up next is your consent agenda.
Move, we approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agendas presented. Is there further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, under administrative items, will be the advisory boards.
Yes, before you tonight, you have the listing for the planning board recommendations. They were previously presented to council at the January 3rd meeting of this year. There was asked for a little bit of extra time to consider the planning board recommendations, so they are presented to you again. And those names include Jody Dupree will be filling in ETJ position, Ronald Williams, James Moore, Kevin Lee, Ethan Bennett, and James Limbscombe. So I'm looking for approval for those recommendations. And then one other item that I don't need any action on, just to keep you updated, we have one of our members on the DDA who's unable to complete their term, so we'll have a vacancy on that board, and we will go ahead and advertise for that vacancy.
Okay, duly noted. And what's the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the appointments for the advisory board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the advisory board for the planning board. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, up next is employee introduction and acknowledgement. Start with Ben Howell from our planning, our planning director.
Good evening, council. I'm pleased to be here tonight to introduce our new Planner One trainee, Bruce Venable. He comes to us from the great state of Texas, born and raised in San Antonio, and he went to college out there with a grad, a degree in environmental geography. And so we're pleased to welcome him here. He is living in Clayton with his wife and his dogs, and we're pleased to welcome him to the department, excited for, to have him. So with that, that's it.
Wonderful. Welcome, Bruce.
Thank you.
Did you bring a southern Texas accent with you?
Unfortunately, no, sir.
Okay, well, we'll work on your southern one while you're here.
Yeah, thank you.
No, we're glad to have you part of the team.
Glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben.
Bill, uh, Bill Simpson, wastewater plant superintendent, here tonight to introduce our new hire, Stefania Markeen. She comes to us from Stevens Point, Wisconsin. Started in October. She did a brief doing her calls and following up on her application. She, she did a double internship at a small town in Wisconsin where she worked. Usually, they only had a intern for a single semester. They were pressed with their work and extended it for consecutive semester. She also was a project assistant with Blackham Beach before she came here. So Stefania Markeen.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Welcome.
And then I have with me Mattie Fraser. Mattie started a year and a half ago. She just completed her grade two North Carolina Biological Wastewater Operator Certification in December. And she's been very busy. In November, she also completed and passed her North Carolina WEA Voluntary Wastewater Analyst Grade One exam. So she comes, she was introduced last year. She's from Texas also. Once had been here about a year and a half. And unfortunately, my third employee that just recently passed his grade two in September, and then his grade three in December, is at home with a sick child tonight. So Chad Wallace isn't here, able to be here tonight, but.
We'll get him back.
When will he be back?
We'll have him back.
Oh, we'll have him back. All right. I'll be sure to let him know. But he was excited. But no, I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity and the, you've given these people and the support that they provide for us.
Awesome. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is life-saving awards with presenting is Greg Dart, police chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clark, members of the council. I've stood before you before and presented life-saving awards for a couple of different incidents we've had around town. We have a process at the police department where these folks are nominated through this process, and it ultimately comes to me to make the final decision when giving one of these awards out. So I take it pretty seriously. The set of circumstances that I'm about to tell you, I can't think of a scenario that would qualify for a life-saving award any more than this one. While this is a pending court case, and to protect the integrity of the case and the judicial process, I won't go into a lot of details about what happened and why it happened, but I will give you some basic details to what occurred. With me tonight is Lieutenant John LaQuire. He was the watch commander on duty on Saturday night, December the 18th. Sergeant Timothy Mims was the patrol sergeant. His squad was on duty that night. Officer Jeffrey Demarest and Officer Kayvon Banks were also working that night, as well as the rest of the squad. At about 5:50 PM, they received a call from Johnston County 911 of a motor vehicle accident on Bowling Street near Robin Lane. It was a single car accident, and the vehicle had run off the road, struck a tree, and flipped upside down and blocked both lanes of traffic on Bowling Street. These gentlemen responded along with Officer Corey Sedano and Patrick Chishido. And when they arrived after ascertaining what was going on, they quickly realized there was an engine fire on the vehicle. Officer Demarest retrieved his fire extinguisher from his patrol vehicle and immediately put out the fire. Inside that vehicle were two nine-month-old infants in the back seat, in car seats. Officer Demarest managed to climb his way inside of the vehicle, and it was a 2010 Honda Accord, which is not a very big vehicle to start with. And I brought just one picture to give you some idea. In my courtroom days, I'd say, Your Honor, can I approach?
Yes, sir.
Officer Demarest managed to get inside the vehicle and cut those kids loose from that car seat that was hanging upside down. Lieutenant LaQuire, who was a certified paramedic, began checking the children to make sure they were okay as Johnston County EMS and Clayton Fire arrived at the scene and took over whatever first responding need to be done with those kids. Sergeant Mims was trying to locate the driver of the vehicle, and she was pointed out to him as she took off running down Bowling Street, down Flamingo Drive. It was dark. Officer Kayvon Banks assisted him in a foot pursuit. They lost the lady because of the darkness. And as they were searching the area, they heard splashing coming from a pond. With the use of their flashlights, they were able to see a female in the pond asking for help. And I'm gonna pick on Sergeant Mims just a little bit. He is not a fan of water. But they put all that aside, and they located a nearby boat. They put the boat in the water. Officer Banks and Sergeant Mims got into the boat, paddled out to this young lady, and managed to pull her inside the boat and probably save her life. So that's why we're here. I say all that to say this before I present these awards. I am very fortunate in the role that I'm in to be able to lead some of the finest men and women in my law enforcement career that spans 33 years. I've been all over this state. I've worked with all kinds of departments, large, small, whatever it may be. But I am here to say tonight that I've worked with some of the finest men and women that wear a badge, and those that don't, who support these men and women, and some of them are here tonight. So I say that to say this. They will tell you that this is a job. This is not a job. It's a calling. And in a, in a day we live in where few people are taking that calling anymore, more than those that do, I can honestly say that the men and women that we have have that calling, and this is evidence of, of the calling today and the oath that they have taken to protect life in this community and in this town. So I'll quit talking and present these awards. I will read what the rewards say. Clayton Police Department, to all may read these letters. Greetings. This is to certify that Lieutenant John LaQuire, Sergeant Timothy Mims, Officer Kayvon Banks, and Officer Jeffrey Demarest has hereby awarded the life-saving ribbon. Their actions led to the prolong of life for a victim. Their efforts made a significant contribution to not only the victim in the case, but also the enhancement of the department and its operations for diligence in the performance of their duties above normal expectations, and for extinguishing themselves by displaying a sense of loyalty and dedication to this agency and the town of Clayton in keeping with the high standards of professionalism, given this day, the 18th day of January 2023. So Lieutenant LaQuire, if you'll come forward, sir. Thank you. Sergeant Mims. Last but not least, Kayvon.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, now y'all can go back to your place because the mayor got some comments. I don't mean your seat. I mean where you were standing facing us. If I've learned anything, is you have to give clear, concise direction to police officers. No, I'm just kidding. First of all, I can't thank you enough for being a part of our team. And I think Greg Tart said everything that needs to be said when it comes to having never worked with a better group of professionals to create the Clayton Police Department. You know, police department, the law enforcement, the public safety side, is the greatest percentage of funding where tax dollars go to. And in the town of Clayton, they are invested wisely, and the results that we get are amazing, and people feel safe in this town, and they feel appreciated. They're not intimidated. You have a wonderful relationship with the town of Clayton, the entire law enforcement. And I want to take this opportunity as the mayor to personally say thank you for what you do every day for the town of Clayton. Because to me, and I don't want to take away from the seriousness of this, but to me, I don't know that I could face my fear like that. It takes a very special person. I think to the chief's point, it's a calling. And I, I would have completely hesitated whether it was crawling into a car regardless of the size that was as tore up as that one was, or if it was jumping or being in a water rescue, you know, like you look beyond your fears, and you just do what you're trained to do, and you're super successful at it. And I'm proud of all of our men and women, and I thank you all for your service to the town of Clayton. Outstanding work. Any other comments from council?
Just thank you so much. It's so nice to be able to come together and celebrate something like this that you all accomplished. And I'm really proud that I live in a town where that kind of stuff happens, and you definitely make my life and my friends' lives safer every day. So thank you.
I just want to say, just real short and sweet, I absolutely love this. Again, as the chief said, it is truly a calling. My brother, who's a police officer in Detroit for 25 years, I understand what it takes to be in a life or death situation where you have to react. And that's not for everybody. And I truly, truly think it's a blessing that we have you guys on, on our force, and ask that you just continue. And hopefully, our young people will learn from you and understand what it, what it means to step up to the plate. And the gentleman who, whichever one that doesn't know, has issues with the water and swimming, come see me. I'll teach you.
I just want to say, you know, what everybody else said, thank you. You represent the very best of this town, and every day.
Every day.
And not every profession has to work with the independence that you do, and has to be individual leaders. You know, some people work in environments with very direct supervision where they don't do anything without somebody telling them what to do. And you're the exact opposite. You have to be individual leaders and make split-second decisions without that supervisor being always right beside you, or them to have time to tell you what to do. And so I think that's, this is a prime example of that, that every one of you is a leader, whether you wear a gold badge or a silver badge, or what kind of rank you've got. You all have what it takes to be leaders, and, and that's what we need and what we're most appreciative for in Clayton, that we've got leadership at every level, from the police officer, the very newest police officer to the top to the chief. We've got leadership all the way through the ranks, and we appreciate that.
And we got leadership all the way through at town hall, just some of us don't get to carry a gun. Mr. Ford, Casey.
I echo those same sentiments everybody else said. Appreciate what y'all do, and I'm proud to call Clayton home and glad y'all are protecting our community. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yes, for some of you already know, all of you even before getting on council, so you guys are already amazing. But thank you for everything that you always do. And I think this is every, with the climate that's going on around the world today, it's, it's awesome seeing things like this happening going forward. So I think this is, this is a good look, especially with our police force. Thank you so much, you guys.
Thank you. All right, up next on the agenda is the downtown parking task force update.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director. I'm going to be sharing the presentation here tonight with Ruth Anderson, one of our downtown parking task force members. And she's been selected to be the one that's going to be leading the presentation. And we'll have a few other comments from some of our other task force members throughout the conversation. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ruth for a minute.
Thank you. Selected. I like that. That was pretty good. Not sure that's, I'm not sure that's accurate, but, and we're gonna have to do this. You're gonna have to raise it up and then down. So first of all, thank you for the opportunity to bring our body of work to you, Mayor, and town council members. We appreciate you hearing what we've been working on. Our presentation agenda tonight, and I'm assuming you have copies of this as well, what we want to go over is we want to recap, oh, thank you. We want to recap the current situation that we're in. We want to introduce the task force and their work. We want to bring you, the task force is recommendations and sort of how we got there, an overview of the public-private partnerships, next steps, and the requests of the council. I also want you to know that Sharon Spence Whitley is here tonight, and Kristi Thompson is here tonight, and they're going to participate in this presentation as well. And we're going to hand this off to Patrick. He's pulling up the PowerPoint. Glad that wasn't my job. There you go.
So I want to do a quick review. There was a session that you all had on parking here over the summer, but since it's a new council, new members, I know some of you all participated in that, but one, I thought it'd be good to at least give a quick level set on some of the data here. First, I want to start out downtown parking is difficult, and that's not something that, we're not the only town that struggles with this. And these quotes came out of another parking study from a, from a town that I found. The first one, I think, is very, very important to the town of Clayton. Nope, is no place is worth caring about that doesn't have a parking problem. So it's, this is a good thing. While it's a challenge and something we need to overcome, it beats the alternative every single day of the week. And the other one is when it comes to parking, rational people quickly become emotional. So obviously, this is something people want to do what they want to do, and there's a lot of passion around downtown, and that's a good thing. So in this recap, this So in this recap, this kind of is, is the timeline here, there was a special meeting of Town Council on July 22nd to discuss this problem. There was Town Council action that was taken in removing the parking requirement downtown for non-residential uses. September 15th, the mayor, as part of that July 22nd meeting, stood up a mayor's Downtown Parking Task Force, they met on September 15th. And a few other relevant things is the growth plan was approved on November 15th, that kind of pointed to this work that said this task force is going to have a voice there and appreciate that, and I know that the members do. And downtown master plan was also discussed at a previous meeting in terms of getting kicked off here soon, and a pedestrian plan should be completed. All those things really kind of tie into what we are talking about here tonight. So this is one of the, I've got a few slides here from the survey. So we surveyed residents and I guess anyone that would fill it out, and the majority of those, over 50% were residents with in-town limits, another quarter or so of those were within the ETJ, and the rest were kind of a mix between property business and downtown residents here. So just so you know whose voice is kind of speaking. A good number of them say that parking is an issue only during certain days or times or during major events. And I would say only a quarter of them feel that it's an issue all of the time or most of the time. In terms of solutions, we had them pick two in terms of options that would enhance parking. Additional off-street parking was by far and away the number one option there. A parking dock or, a parking deck or garage, improved sidewalks and connectivity were number two and three there. In terms of paying for parking, always, always a conversation, it's about a two-thirds, one-third split with two-thirds saying no. So just knowing the tools in the toolbox here. In terms of hotspots, really no surprise from square to square is where folks identified as the, and that is really the core of downtown. So again, no surprise there, those are those red, red blocks there. In terms of walking, so reading this, 90% of people were willing to walk at least a block or two, and some people are willing to walk three or four or even five blocks. So I think there has been a lot of conversation, and Ruth will talk about here later in terms of changing that culture a bit about walking and that we go to other towns and other cities and we walk places and it's okay. So there's a little bit of a, kind of a shift in mindset there, I think, in terms of being okay to walk a little bit from your parking spot to your destination. And then in terms of capacity, you know, this is something that we, staff did a survey of parking spots, I would say the big piece here is you, there's, you know, a significant amount of spots and a lot of spots of those are private parking. So that's 814 parking spots that are in private ownership and 313 in public ownership. So that, I think, has informed some of our conversations as we move forward as we've looked for strategies and solutions. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ruth to talk more about what the Downtown Parking Task Force has been up to.
Just the microphone again. Short people syndrome. The first thing I want to do is introduce you to the Downtown Parking Task Force members. This was a group that the mayor put together specifically to give us a broad range of input from every possible aspect that, that could bring energy and information in. And if you're here, if you want to stand up and wave or wave, whatever you'd like to do, Mayor Jody McLeod's on the task force, I'm on the task force, Emily Beddingfield is on the task force, Jim Pericone is on the, you're supposed to, you people are supposed to wave, then, yeah, there you go. Russ Ragland is on the task force, Michael Strauss is at another meeting, Cindy Swartzkopf, Kristi Thompson, who, oh, look at you, I'm so impressed. Good job. Kristi Thompson and Sharon Spence Whitley. So that's who, and Lydia and Lydia Davis and Patrick, who really was helping steer us and guide us and keep us in the right, right place. And again, just want to emphasize that it's downtown business owners, it's professionals, it's people who live downtown, technical experts that were brought into this mix to talk about zoning and other development opportunities. And we just wanted to make sure we had a very holistic view of what this looked like. And I think you can see with this, this mix, I think we accomplished that. Next slide. Fire my help. So task force meetings, this is our agenda, these are, these are our meeting dates and what we talked about. And I can't stress enough about how forward moving this group is. This group is action item driven. So we didn't meet at each one of these meetings and start all over again. We had the initial brainstorm meeting where we just threw it on the table, wrote it, wrote it up, and Patrick kept all the notes and then sort of we raided and scored and that kind of thing. He kept up with all of that. So every single meeting, we've moved on to another opportunity, refine and prioritize. We, we had ranked issues and we went back and looked at what the collective was and what came out of that for our highest and best priorities. We finalized the recommendations. November 16th, we had a great meeting. We invited property owners, stakeholders, to be part of this meeting, to hear about what our ideas were, what their ideas were, what their needs were, if in this partnership they would be willing to have that conversation and what their needs were based on their specific situations. That was, that was a great meeting. We had, we invited, I don't, I don't even remember how many, but we had great participation. We had the vast majority show up, I think. January 5th, we reconvened and planned for this presentation to you all and what we were going to do and how we were going to address that. Areas of focus, this is what we came up with, we talked about prioritizing and how we sort of ranked what we wanted to attack and how we wanted to do that. The use of private lots, activating that capacity and coming up with a plan based on what we, what we had identified that would work for the public-private partnership. The other thing we talked about was communication. And what, a lot of what came out of this task force is talking to business owners that were part of our task force is communication needs to be worked on. We need to be talking to each other, not just assuming what the status quo is and that it works, because clearly it did not work and, and that was not the direction we were headed. So kudos to you, Mayor, for, for putting this together to start the conversation. It's a culture shift as well, we talked about that. It sort of goes with pedestrian access, safety and alternative mobility. We have to find a way to communicate to our citizens how this is going to work. And to Patrick's point, and one of your points was, you know, how far do you walk when you park in the parking lot of Walmart? To get to the end of the, all the way through the store? Well, it's, it's a mindset, it's a culture, it's just, let's talk about this and put out information to really let people see how far you really are walking and how far you walk other places. So that's a big part of what we're doing. We want to talk about pedestrian safety and that's why our chief has been part of these conversations. We want to make sure that, that what gets put in place can be enforced and be followed up on and it makes sense. Anything I missed there? All right, you're back up. And I'm not going to move the microphone for you, you're going to have to raise your
So one thing, again, that was number one on there was this use of private lots and the partnership. So what we did is we took a, a look based on the assessment that staff had done over the summer and really tried to kind of rank those down in a funnel here, looking at size, obviously larger lots, if we're going to do an agreement or something like that, we want to make sure we're getting most bang for our buck, kind of the existing, existing conditions, so paved lots being obviously easier to maintain and make safe, you know, their location, let's keep it as close to those hubs and that core that we talked about, ability to join with other lots and have them connected, connectivity to the sidewalk so you have easy access. And then, you know, ADA compliance and understanding, you know, how they're set up and how much, you know, adaptation might be needed there. So in doing that, we found that we did two rounds of prioritization, we did, went out with some of our street maintenance staff as well and looked at some of these. We have an opportunity here, total of about 439 spaces. And if you remember, the total number of public spaces that we have currently is about 313. So you could, you know, there's an opportunity to, likely not all these spaces would become available, but still there's an opportunity to double or really make a significant, you know, recapitalization or, you know, new spaces into public use here and across about 18 owners. And I'll say as a note, the reason those don't all add up in terms of high and medium other is because there's some that are multiple, you've got owners in multiple categories. So I did my math right, I just want to make sure if anyone's scratching their head wondering why those didn't add up correctly. So the high priority spaces are really those we think are going to be the low hanging fruit. And again, there's a good number of those and, you know, looking forward to, you know, potentially having conversations with them about ways that we could partner. And then getting into kind of the typical tools, and these are also the pain points, you know, there's the liability issue. If I'm going to, if I'm a, if I'm a private lot owner, I want to make sure, you know, the public is on my parking spot and there's, there's some kind of shared liability there. And I think from some conversation, there's probably a way to do that. There's some site improvements, if we want to call this public parking, making sure that the lighting, the striping, all those things are, are correct and safe. There's the shared maintenance in terms of long-term, if you're going to put extra use and extra cars on those, you know, what is that pavement? Is there a way to be able to work, work together as well as upkeep? If someone was to, you know, leave a bag of, I don't know, their Taco Bell or something like that and throw it all over the lot, making sure we're coming back through and there's someone out there and there's some kind of partnership there. You know, signage weight finding, you know, other towns have done utilities and taxes and helped pay for some of the lights and maybe pay for the, the enhancement. And then there's the enforcement of what happens if these lots are to, if people are parking these lots in off times when they're not supposed to be there, when it's private parking and be able to work. So those are kind of the tools in the toolbox and which really led us to what we came to in terms of recommendations. And I'm going to turn it over to Ruth here to unveil the recommendations and also invite a couple of our task force members up to speak to them.
And I'd like to do that first, I'd like, if you guys don't mind, Sharon and Sharon Spence Whitley and Kristi Thompson, if you guys would come up and sort of kick this off, I think your perspective, your individual perspective.
Hi, Council.
Good evening.
I just want to talk a little bit about joining this group and I appreciate Jody's depth whenever he looked at this group, so it wasn't just single focus on just relationship building with the business owners, it was also how do we communicate this effectively to the public? How do we look at it from the first time you ever drive through Clayton to you've lived here for 25 years and where do you park now? So I appreciate the depth of the group from having Emily's strength in backgrounds, Ruth's obviously, community involvement, but this group is very deep and I think all of our perspectives led to really strong collaboration. And it also, I think, opens up a lot of opportunities for communication with businesses that I think there's been a gap before. So, you know, Sharon's experience, starting out in the group and then leaving this group at that last meeting, she can tell you her reflection and, you know, I think collaboration has really been helpful and I think what she brings to the table is amazing because we actually got the business owner input instead of just taking from them and coming to them, we're actually asking them and involving them in what would work best for them because we're, there's a, there's a huge need and she's really one of the main ones that can give it to us, so I'll pass it over to her.
Hello, Mayor, hello, Council.
Good evening.
Welcome to the new members, too. Awesome, congratulations. In Patrick's presentation, he kind of started with our timeline with that special Town Council meeting that was held in July. But to back up some things, my mom, who is Ava Spence, who is actually the property owner for the Clayton Square Shopping Center, which is Compare Food and a couple of other businesses that are there, she received a letter on May the 2nd of 2021 and was wanting a Zoom call about possibly using the parking for some new businesses that were coming in right across the street. So May 17th, actually my brother Donovan Spence had that phone call. My mother was going through treatments with lymphoma and so he took the phone call from Hunter DeFees, I guess is how you pronounce his name. And what was left in that conversation was that Hunter was going to get back with us after speaking with Mr. Crawford and coming up with some kind of agreement to possibly rent, lease, use our parking, because again, it's right across the street. Around the same time, there was another letter from the Town of Clayton dated May 7th regarding the Clayton Board of Adjustments meeting that was held on May 19th. So all of these things are kind of happening a little bit before and a little bit kind of after. And at that Board of Adjustment, or at that meeting, it was kind of presented, kind of that Hunter had talked with us and that it was kind of okay to kind of go along, that, you know, they saw no, no roadblocks. And, you know, my brother was like, wait a minute, that's not, that's not the conversation, that's not how we left the phone call. So left a little bit kind of bitter taste in our mouth as a family, because in that parking area, there is 110 parking spots in there. A lot of that is definitely used for the businesses that rent those, those places. But there's a good square that is open and a lot of mom groups will put in their mom groups and things, hey, where do we park for the Clayton Parade or where do we park for the Harvest Festival? And they're always like, Compare Food, go to Compare Food and park there, there's plenty of parking there. So again, this is private, this is not, Town of Clayton does not own it, they don't pay taxes on that or upkeep on that. So they had a Board of Adjustments meeting in June and a variance was passed that Crawford and Cook Shack could go ahead with continuing because they had already put hundreds of thousands of dollars, according to what was said in the meeting, into this building, into renovations, into making downtown Clayton look even better, bring in more businesses, bring in more people. All of that is good. I love to eat, I love to eat out, I don't like to cook, so I love trying out new restaurants and things like that. Cardinal and Little Ombre are also part of this kind of package deal. There was definitely not enough parking when they came to you guys. So the variance was passed that they could go ahead and, and proceed with what they were already in the process of doing. They were technically 69 parking spots short. And what was kind of come up was that not to do an unnecessary hardship was what was mentioned, to go ahead and allow them to go ahead with the process of putting in these restaurants, that there was plenty of parking there, plenty of parking on the streets and plenty of public parking. That was not really the case and we all know that, hence why this task force was kind of come up. Then throughout all of this, again, our family was not very happy about this, we're talking, we're very angry, very upset about this, you know, because again, what's going to happen? They're just going to park right across the street and walk across the street, just like they do for Joneses, just like they do for Mannings, just like they do for businesses, just like they do for parades, all of that, they're going to use our lots. And my dad, when he built the store or came into Clayton, well before my 57 years, I'm not quite 57 yet, but coming up on that, had a store in Raleigh, a store here, my uncle's had a grocery store, there used to be a little tiny grocery store in front of the one that was there, not sure any of you guys remember any of that, how many of y'all were here back then, how many of you are older than me? They moved some houses around, moved them to the back of the store, moved the fish mark. I mean, my dad really was into the town and it's a crying shame that it's been 20 years since he passed away because he probably would have done a whole lot more for this town had he been around, so. Anyway, keeping with that, he never really wanted to charge anybody anything. He would give you the shirt off his back, he let people come in and charge groceries at his store. That does not happen nowadays, guys, I can't tell you. I worked there since I was 13 years old and I would go up there and pull out the little receipts for people to pay on their grocery tab because they still could not pay the whole entire amount, he was not going to let somebody go hungry. He loved Clayton, he was born and bred here. And in doing that, wanting to keep with his vision, we want to have some kind of say in what happens with that parking area in addition to other private parking. There was that special parking Town Council meeting that happened during the daytime, it was about a three-hour meeting if some of y'all were there. And in there, I actually heard that the town could actually lease with private owners. And I was like, what? Never heard this before, why has anyone never, in all these years, never come to us? Because again, we never made a stink out of it. It was, oh, it's okay, just go ahead, it's okay, just go ahead. And not the fact that my mom needs money to pay for the parking or to clean up or any of that, we've done that just fine all over the years. She is getting ready to be 80 years old in February, so myself and my brother are kind of taking over some of the reins. My three daughters, well, four daughters, but three of them are also starting to take over some of the office things and all of that. And so that just kind of gets you to the point where we are with this task force. And so at that meeting, I think I wasn't very nice at the meeting and I kept reiterating the same thing kind of over and over and over and over again. Hence, the mayor said, we'll come up with a parking task force. Hence, the mayor said, we'll come up with the parking task force and Sharon, you're going to be my assistant. So, so that's kind of how it happened. And then I was like, well, how long is this? Are we going to, when, when can this parking task force happen? Six months from now? And they were like, no, 30 days. Technically, we did pretty dag on good keeping with that. So from July to September, first meeting, I had COVID, couldn't go. My brother did. They called in so that I could kind of hear what was going on. But I haven't missed any of the meetings since. I will tell you from the beginning, when my brother was there, he was like, tow them all. Tow all the cars that pull in there. Put up signs. Let's, let's charge for parking. You know, let's just, let's get into 2021 at the time, you know? So he was very adamant that we were being used. I have since walked around to several businesses myself, talked to private business owners to find out their views. Some of them feel like they are also being used and that it's time something changes. Clayton's getting, growing, it's getting bigger. We want people to come in from other areas and towns and places. We want them to build here. We want them to live here. We want them to go to church here, shop here. Number one, we want them to shop here. We want them to spend their money here. And so in doing so, we would like to partnership with the town. There's lots of different tools to be able to use. Each private owner may have something different and that does need to be a conversation that does need to happen with the town with each private, not just private owner, not just here's the global thing, we're going to pay taxes on everybody's. That doesn't work. Because some of them have five to seven spots. Obviously, my mom owns probably one of the largest areas that has parking. But again, we got to make sure we maintain enough for our tenants, our customers, to make sure they continue to be successful there, but in addition, helping out the town and helping them grow. So thank you for letting me speak.
So the, I don't think I need to read these. I think it's pretty clear what these recommendations are. And between Kristi and Sharon, they, they really went over those. The one, I'll just read through them quickly. Seek out and define public-private partnerships. You can see that we really worked diligently to do that and will continue to do that. Improve downtown wayfinding and kiosk. I'm not going to drill too far down into that, but we've had some great suggestions, apps, signs, measurements of time to walk from here to there. Great, great things in place to be able to solve that. Develop and convey a parking and pedestrian vision for NCRR, right-of-way and private lots. We've, I've lived here a long time. This conversation has been one that has continued to grow and we look forward to developing that relationship. Explore the options for the public parking app. We've had some great input there. And then the enforcement piece that we've already talked about. And I can't say enough about this group. You, you saw the passion in this group. You saw their commitment and this group has shown up. Every meeting, we've shown up. And every meeting, again, not to be redundant, we've moved forward with our issues. Can't say enough about having people like Michael and Kristi and Sharon in place to really hear firsthand what the issues are and what the partnership needs to look like. Because if we don't have these conversations and something gets set up, then somebody's not going to be happy. But if everybody's collaboratively in the conversation, then we're going to come to a solution that's going to be innovative, new and benefit our town and our businesses downtown. Yeah, propose next steps. I don't know where that sheet was. But anyway, our proposed next steps are to get your buy-in. And I, and I hope we've convinced you tonight that we are taking very seriously what our, our assigned tasks are. And we'd love your continued buy-in for continuing forward with this task force. Staff began substantive conversations with private lot owners. That has started. We again invited them to the task force. And I can't stress enough, and I'll wrap this up, but I can't stress enough, the, the town participation. Rich is there. What's your name? Mayor Jody McLeod has been there. Porter's been at, at some of these meetings. Andrea has been at some of these meetings. And it's, everybody's at the table. That's the great thing about this. And we're going to make sure that, we're committed to make sure everybody has a voice to Sharon and Kristi's point. So that is what we've been doing. And we're going to come back to you in May to report on where we are and to ask the questions based on what we've charged the town with from this task force and what we want from you. We want updates and we want you to be as committed to this as we are in moving this forward and not just sitting on it. And with that, anybody got any questions for anybody in the room that's on the task force? Patrick, not just me.
Questions, comments?
Mr. Thompson? The key words for me and the takeaway from this is action-oriented and results. And so often we create committees for things and they just spin tires and don't get any traction. And this group has traction. And I got to give kudo to the mayor and to everybody. The right people were chosen to make this happen. And I like the depth of the group, the, the varied interest. And I know, I grew up in downtown and somebody is parked in front of your house every day. And you have to struggle just to get in and out of your driveway sometimes. I can only imagine a business owner being in those same shoes with somebody parked in front of your business that's not even coming inside. And, you know, it's got to be super frustrating and, and I get it. And I think, I just think the right group has been chosen to make this work. And I like presentations like this because I feel like things are being accomplished. There's no tire spinning. Things are getting accomplished and I'm, I'm just appreciative for you.
This, I will tell you, this group gelled really quickly from the beginning and we worked really well together and we say whatever we think. We might not agree 100%, but we feel very comfortable. And I've lived in this town over 40 years. And I will tell you that the vibrancy of downtown is what's kept our family in Clayton and how it's grown. And we want to, we've got an amazing opportunity here to really enhance what we've got in a, in a thoughtful, equitable way. My husband hates to use the word fair because fair's, it's, it's not fair. It's equitable. It needs to be equitable for all parties, the town and the property owners.
Awesome. Anyone else? Ms. Archer?
I was just going to say, I like the practical approach to this. I know I do a lot of things downtown as well and, you know, hear a lot of complaints about parking. And people generally immediately go to, hey, y'all need to build a parking lot or you need to build a parking deck. And while I, I think that would be great, what you all have done with identifying spots and coming up with other tools to just use what we have while we can, you know, maximize what we've got, I, I really appreciate that.
Thank you. On behalf of the group, not just...
Yeah. Anyone else?
I mean, I'm excited. I'm looking forward to some more of the action items. Obviously, cost is always going to be key, so I'm sure that's going to come back to us at some point. But keep on moving forward. Downtown's awesome. These new restaurants that we have, they're phenomenal. I'd love to see more. I'm a downtown person, too. I love walking around and just seeing everything. Appreciate what y'all are doing.
Thank you.
So first of all, if you want to get any results done, Jason, you put Sharon Spence Quitley out there because she comes in hot. And then when you get some results, she cools back down. So she's results-driven or you're going to get burned up. Kristi Thompson, on the other hand, is, here's what your problem is, Mr. Mayor. You know, and when people give you that honest feedback based on their experiences and the come from of, I am a well-invested businessperson in downtown Clayton, that's some information that's highly regarded. So, you know, Emily Beddingfield with her planning background, Jim Pericone with his development background, like Russ and Michael Strauss back there, quiet, you know? Unfortunately, we can't talk bad about Russ Ragland because of course, he just came back from San Francisco, I mean, from Hawaii and now he's in San Francisco. Bless his heart. But this group has been tremendous and have, has held everyone accountable and feet to the fire. Here's the beauty of it. In today's time, we rely so much on technology for communication. And while that was an aspect of this task force, these task force members went door-to-door to see people face-to-face, the old-fashioned way of doing business and creating relationship and creating, to Kristi's point, solid communication. And that is why this task force has achieved the great success that it has received thus far. And if you are looking for anything from this council, I think it's fair to say that you have 100% support from this council in what you think is what we need to be doing for parking for downtown Clayton. And if you stick around a little bit longer, you're going to find out the schedule for budget. So if there are monies, I know that perks, perks Rich's ears up. You know, obviously, there's going to be some investment on, on behalf of the Town of Clayton. And this investment is well warranted.
Yes.
And it provides relief and support and creates safety for people to shop and be a part of downtown Clayton. And it will be less expensive than trying to build a two- or three-story parking deck, which is not aesthetically pretty. And who wants that? I don't want anything that's not attractive, you know? And so continue your great work. Let us know what you need from us and bring us your best recommendations and we will blow life into that. Because what you're doing is making a tremendous difference for the Town of Clayton and not just in the next year or two, but in decades to come. So we thank you for your service.
Well, thank you for your support. We really appreciate the time and we'll be back.
Wonderful. Yes. Y'all really don't have to stay for the budget part. You can leave. I know you've been here a while. I get it. But don't be late for the next meeting. We'll save you some money. Yes, of course, we'll save some money. Because I don't want to have to pay to park at Compare Foods. Thank you. Up next on the agenda is a public hearing, 2021-126 OA Resource Conservation Area Steep Slopes Text Amendment.
Good evening, Council. So this is a, a continuation of the public hearing for the Steep Slopes Text Amendment. I do not have a PowerPoint for you tonight. I provided additional information in the packet. I do have some, some of that information I can pull up if you'd like, but really, I wanted to open it back up for Council discussion.
Thank you. For correction for the record, this is not a continuation of the public hearing. The public hearing has already happened and is closed. And now this is a continuation of Council discussion for more information from staff. So with that, if there's any questions or comments from Council...
Yes, I have a comment.
Mr. Sims?
Yeah, so first I want to start off by saying I want to thank staff and I want to thank the citizens, the developers, everybody who has reached out to me on this particular I am in agreement in the fact that this thing has been very complex. With that being said, it kind of confuses me a little bit that why we would have such a quick removal of it because the complexities of it, there are a lot of different complexities that are, are in this. I thank everybody for the, their input. With that being said, you know, I, I do look at option one as being one that is extremely restrictive. Option two is probably about middle ways. And option three, I think, would be probably on the, on the, the more lenient side. The actual argument of this or the ordinance itself does not actually need to really be addressed to the Council because it was something that was already on the books. I think one of the things that should be looked at as we go to do the rewrite of the uniform code, I think this is something that should be addressed then. But because of where we're at now, I do believe where I'm standing and where I kind of feel, and I just want to hear the rest of my compadres, is that I'm leaning towards option three. And I do want to also thank the planning board for their recommendation of option two. But again, based upon everything I've looked at, the sites I have gone to, the people I have talked to, I do believe we need to have something on the books because it just kind of frightens me a little bit with everybody. I'm going off of what people are telling me, that it's just such a complex issue. And I agree. But why would we not have something on the books if that would be the case? Because that was what was on there before. And I think how we look at it is that, hey, look, let's look at this when we go into the rewrite and we have a lot of time and we can have even more experts on this.
Ms. Archer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Sims, for your comments. I, I agree with a lot of that. And I did want to echo something that you said because we, I have also received a lot of letters and public comments over the past couple of weeks about this issue. And I just want to make sure it's clear that the town did have a steep slope ordinance on the books for many years. In fact, it was just removed a couple of months ago by the previous council. And so to, to give some folks who are new to this discussion, just a little bit of background, this whole process got started last year. There was a proposed development that wanted to develop on a steep slope. So it went to the Town Board of Adjustment as a variance request and that variance was granted. In addition to that property, there was another one scheduled to go to the board for the same reason. And so sometime during those two properties being on the Board of Adjustment schedule, it, it came to the staff's attention that the language of the ordinance was probably not written very well and it could be written better. There was also a lot of discussion during that time about how different people in town had had different experiences with this ordinance. And that led some people to say we didn't need an ordinance at all. In fact, when the steep slope discussion first started last year, I was on the Town Planning Board. And at that point in time, I was also skeptical that we needed an ordinance to deal with steep slope. There were already state and federal laws in my mind that were in place to protect natural resources and water quality. I will say, since that time that I was on the planning board and now here on the Council, I have visited properties and seen for myself the side effects of developing on steep slopes. And I can also now see the rationale for regulating steep slopes at the local level versus the state or federal because terrain and soils vary so much from one region to another. I wanted to just let people know that I do share the concern that a steep slope ordinance can hinder good development and negatively affect some people's property's values. I hear that. Where I'm at with this right now is unfortunately, we need a rule like this to make sure that so what something, someone's doing on their property doesn't do something unfairly to someone else's property and we have to balance that. I have also found it reassuring that several other surrounding municipalities have steep slope ordinances and it has not stopped growth or development there. I also know that for people who do want to develop on a steep slope, they will still have the opportunity to go before the Board of Adjustment and seek a variance for that. I promise I'm wrapping up here. But we did receive a lot of comments about this. So I also wanted to make sure to note that not all runoff and erosion is from steep slopes. I realize that. And even with an ordinance in place, we will not preserve every slope. So these decisions are gray areas. And, you know, you could make an argument, why are we preserving 25% slopes, not 26 or 24? But we do deal with arbitrary numbers every day in our lives. You could say a speed limit, the same thing. Why 45 miles an hour, not 44, not 46? So for any of these situations, you have to draw the line somewhere. And I do feel like 25% is reasonable for Clayton and, and based on what we've seen for surrounding areas. I also wanted to mention to folks to take a look at page 49 of our town's most recent comprehensive growth plan. We do have a goal in there that specifically relates to protection of steep slopes. That plan was written with public input as well as a steering committee that included individuals from the development community. So I would argue that if this council votes tonight to add steep slope protection back into our code, it is not an arbitrary or overreaching decision. As far as the specific language of the ordinance, I have gotten a lot of great suggestions for how to word it. The good news, as Mr. Sims stated, is that our codes are due for an update and that process is currently underway. So there will be opportunities for public input during that process, which is great. And so in closing, with everything that I have seen and read about steep slopes in the past few months, I am in favor, and I see pros and cons to each option. But the one that I, I'm most in favor of would be option number two with a modification to add the words at least 5,000 square feet contiguous area in size. And my major reason for that is that it's, it's clear, it builds on what the planning board had voted on 2021. board had voted on twice. Again, there are pros and cons, but but that's the one that I'm standing with now. Thank you.
Good work, Ms. Archer. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Casey.
Um, for me, um, this has weighed heavily on me. I've gotten a lot of feedback from a lot of people within the community. Um, I mean, I've read a lot of ordinances from other towns. I've talked to a lot of different people, developers, um, you know, people that are familiar with um the environmental aspects of it. And I felt like there was a lot of confusion and I appreciate Andrea for kind of recapping this. Um, I'm not, I'm in favor of something too. I I don't think we're just trying to do something to make it unfair or make some sort of unjust ordinance. The town had a steep slope ordinance in the past and it was quickly removed after one meeting. This is probably our second or third meeting. We've tabled it. We've put a lot of thought into this. It's not something I think is is a irrational decision. You know, I guess, you know, I'm in favor of increased environmental protections, but also want a healthy, growing town as well. Either way, whatever is chosen, it's not going to be an easy decision. Um, sometimes it may be too restrictive. Other times, it might not provide the best environmental protection. No one's really a winner in this situation. Um, as a council, I said, like I said, we have a tough decision. Um, we're not trying to make a hasty one. I too am in favor of um option two. And I understand the 5,000 square foot requirement. It's similar to what in was in the comp plan that was adopted. The comp plan actually had a 20% slope, whereas this one's 25. Um, you know, I guess that's one of the reasons, you know, like I said, we met on this in December 20th. We had expert testimony. I speak to the fact that steep slopes um around environmental sensitive areas are crucial to erosion control, sediment runoff in the streams, waterways, and slopes, um, slope slope stability. Like I said, like Andrew said too, the planning board voted on this twice and chose two very similar options. Um, you know, we have, um, you know, we've heard testimony from landowners who have had and impacted by the erosion issues that they've had to face. Um, once and plus, once we go a certain route or route, um, something's constructed, we can undo it. Um, and then the town's going to have to face the consequences of their actions. And I I don't want to feel guilty and I don't want to have to have that make be able to make that, you know, decision. You know, for developers, I feel like option two is less restrictive than the ordinance that was in place many years ago or been in place for many years. Um, option two removes the slope, uh, if it's not connected to an environmentally sensitive area. And I feel like that, you know, that that's a that's a win. Um, and like I said before, a lot of other towns have slope ordinances for 15 to 25%. We're just going 25% and up. So me also, it's it's all about the land. Uh, you have good land, you have good developer land that does not require a lot of masquerading, and you have land that's going to be, and that land's going to be the most sought after. And for those who say it's going to stop or hurt development values, I'm doubtful on that. It has not seemed to hurt our surrounding municipalities and who've experienced the same type of growth we've had and the same type of development we've had. Yeah, I'm in favor of the town, uh, working with landowners who have who have environmentally sensitive areas or environmentally sensitive land and see how it can be worked in some form of open space credits, if that's possible. Um, and for larger tracts, environmentally sensitive land, um, I'd like the town to work with those landowners to contact them with land conservancies. There are multiple organizations around uh this area that can help them out with that. I know Triangle Land Conservancy is one of them. So I mean, I I mean, I'm I'm too, like I said, in favor of option two. Um, I can I can buy into the 5,000 square feet. Um, personally, I I'd like to see as we go through the UDO rewrite, that we get an environmental consultant to work with this for the more permanent action that we put take place later. Um, but that's just kind of that's kind of my thoughts.
All right. Good work, Mr. Casey. Anyone else?
Um, yes, sir. I think um everyone knows the option I'm in favor of, which was option two um to begin with. Um, for me, it it was more of a standpoint from the environment, um, you know, protecting, you know, the public and just the welfare of everyone. Um, you know, I have been looking into slopes. I mean, and and on top of that, the planning board, like you guys said, has been into that twice. So, you know, this is why we do have them is to rely on some of their information because as we grow as a town, we cannot be everywhere. So working smarter and not harder is probably the best bet. Um, so, you know, this is why we have boards. Um, but to just going forward, um, I think protection of the environment and just protection of um anything that's connected to the 100-year floodplain is important. We just cannot, you know, just destroy the environment and just build on top of it. Now, I will say this, I I do agree. I think that um having conversations with the development community, um, and just conversations overall, especially if it impacts your business or anything else, I think it's important to have a conversation. But when it comes to the environment, I'm thinking about the public health. And I don't think that everyone is, you know, when it comes to things like that, it's my job to make sure I'm pushing forward with that. And just from what Porter said, not everyone is going to be happy no matter which way we go. But um, you know, we're we're making the best decisions based off of what what our boards tell us and what we do know.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. All right. So uh with that, I will entertain a motion. Ms. Archer.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I would like to make a motion to adopt um ordinance 2021 dash 126 dash OA, option number two, with the additional language, at least 5,000 square feet contiguous area in size. And I will just defer to make sure, Ben, did I, did that sound like I worded that correctly?
I believe so, but just to clarify, so um as shown on the screen, number four would now read, natural steep slopes defined as slopes 25% four to one or greater that are directly connected to one of the above features, comma, and at least 5,000 square feet in contiguous contiguous area in size.
Thank you. Yes, that would be my motion that I'm making.
All right. We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for option two with stated ver with stated additional specifics to that. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like none?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Thank you, everybody. Uh, up next on your agenda, uh, under public hearing is the 2020 dash 98 SUP Champion East Special Use Permit.
Good evening again, counsel. This is a um also continuation of the um Champion East Special Use Permit. I believe this one, the public hearing is being continued to tonight to cheat to receive additional um testimony. At the last meeting, you received um testimony on the findings of fact, so we will not repeat that again tonight. But I did want to, I know at the last meeting, the council was had requested to um receive rendering, architectural renderings of what the townhomes may look like. The applicant has provided that. It is um on your screen as well as in your packet. The applicant is also here um to speak if you have any questions on this.
All right. So um, this is the submitted facade plan for what's being proposed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No variances between last time we saw one style, this time we see another style. This is the style?
This is the style. And um, on that note, I will point out that we did add one condition. Condition number six has been added, um, and the applicant has agreed to it. And that states that a plan set including the revised architectural elevation presented tonight shall be submitted for final approve for final approval by the planning director following the town council approval of special use permit. So that if the town council approves the SUP tonight with this architectural rendering, um, the final subdivision plan will include that rendering um before it is approved by the planning department.
Okay. Questions or comments? Any further clarifications?
Can you go back to the design? Do we, what's that constructed out? I'm just curious. I mean, it's not going to impact my decision. What's that? Can?
Say that one more time.
What are the elements of the facade? What materials are used to create this facade?
Um, and for that, I will have to defer to the applicant's representative who is here.
And can I just, before you begin, were you sworn in?
I was not.
So.
May I ask, please raise your right hand. To solve the front of testimony of applicant, choose the best of knowledge available.
It is.
Would you sign the signature?
Um, to the facade, I I don't know how to answer that question. I don't know what it would be. It's supposed to be, it's going to be um just like the Amelia um product, but to answer your question, what it is, I don't know.
So I'm going to ask a question. So um, how can you guys be seeking approval from the town of Clayton with such limited vague information, uh, with the expectation that this council will remember what is out there on Amelia Road when the majority of them were not here to even approve that specific development? Um, it is, you know, showing up very unprepared for this council.
Yeah. And Mr. Mayor, can I add to that? I love what you just.
Yes, will you get in your microphones so I can hear?
Yeah, uh, I just want to add to that.
A little bit to you.
Okay. I just want to add to that because I was outstanding what you just said because I'm totally confused too because this was one of the original, you know, when you guys came up, it was between, you said it was something between this one and you said another one. So this one was shown uh from what I was thinking before. So to the mayor's point, I'm just really confused to even not know what is going to be, you know, and then just to tell us, you know, Amelia. I I I'm just really concerned about, you know, how you guys are going for and will this actual one be out there when it's all said and done?
I understand that. I was um understood that you just wanted to know was it this building elevation or was it the other one? So I wasn't prepared to see what the facade was made of. I apologize.
Mr. Thompson.
Um, I continuing on with that, did um the applicant bring anyone to be able to testify tonight as to the value of adjoining property um and what how it will affect that?
My understanding is applicant did not bring anyone to testify um to the value of the joining property based on the um discussion at the last uh council meeting. Um, and I believe it was following the um the decision by the council to to table the decision for another meeting. Um, the applicant felt that there was direction from the town attorney at that meeting that unless the um valuation was being challenged, that the report they've submitted was adequate evidence.
Thank you. You know, I I got I got a problem with that, Mr. Attorney down there. So basically, what happened last go around was uh they had uh hearsay presented that there wasn't gonna, there was nothing that was going to adversely affect adjoining property owners. And there was no substantial uh evidence presented other than hearsay. So that was a red flag for me. The person that they listed, that's listed in the minutes as providing his professional opinion, was not here to state that nor to state his credentials. And now, you know, then, which is not how we have rolled with all these quasi judicial hearings. So my point is I'm making sure everyone is treated the same in quasi judicial hearings, but to hear that the attorney says what's been presented is okay is not okay with me.
I would speak to that if you like.
Yes, please.
The hearing on the special use permit is of course a quasi judicial hearing. It is an evidentiary hearing, not your typical public hearing as you have on zoning changes and budgetary matters and so forth. Um, the statutes have recently been amended to require um a much more rigid standard in local quasi judicial hearings as relates to three topics: land value, traffic congestion, and safety. And any other matters where opinion testimony in a court of law, where the strict rules of evidence would require that there be a qualified expert witness appearing. Uh, I did not speak with Mr. Colley about this question and I understand um he may have commented that in this hearing, it would be acceptable. Uh, Mayor, you rule on uh questions of admissibility, subject to being overruled by the council. So it is in your discretion, I can offer comment and questions, but it will be ultimately your determination. I would not want an appraisal report to be the linchpiners that opinion evidence on the land value requires the strict rules of evidence applicable in a court to be followed, which means an individual has to be here and offer live testimony. So that's a lot of words, but but I I think you get my gist. If you are inclined, irreversible error in this case, but it's not a practice, I think.
All, then we're okay with what's been presented about land values because there is no opposition to this present um for this quasi judicial hearing. And, you know, I'm okay with that, but if y'all are not okay with that, then you can say, we can postpone this until we get the documentation that council is requesting and more detail on the specific materials.
Conditions once more. Okay. And I know I know we saw um some of these last time. Uh, and so yeah, I just wanted to also add to to my fellow council members that, you know, looking at the conditions here as well as the discussion that we had last time, I did feel like this project had been pretty thoroughly vetted, I guess, other than tonight not being able to see the actual materials that were going to be on the exterior. So I would be comfortable proceeding in that case. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? The council into deliberation for your discussion and action.
Let me just say that I'm just let the council know that, I mean, I'm fine with this. The only issue I have with this whole thing is it just kind of frightens me that a developer that they come, that the bills, give you the builder has come before us last week and showed us two different pictures. And these are the guys that have put all this money in all this and then they said what's going to be in between one and, you know, and then the other. And then I see this thing, and again, I love the design, absolutely love the design, but the design was up here before. So I question, do you, do you guys know what you're doing over there? Because you didn't even know which one you were going to do and now the same one is back up here. That's just my feelings.
Mr. Thompson.
I feel like um this one's going to skim by. You know, I think they, you know, based on the guidance from our attorneys, barely met their burden. Um, but I do not want to see this as the norm. And I expect when people come before us with quasi judicial proceedings, that they present evidence. And that means qualified witnesses, um, expert testimony. Um, and that's what I expect. Um, and I I think this is going to be all right, but but this should be the exception rather than a rule.
I agree. And I would think to the manager that um it needs to be, you know, uh, expressed to planning staff that when there is a quasi judicial going to take place, staff needs to be able to effectively communicate to the applicant what the expectation is and what type of information we are looking for, what type of visuals we're looking for, and also encourage them to get in touch with the town attorney to find out if there's any other things that they need to be prepared for. Because showing up unprepared is um, you know, it's it makes it challenging for both of us and we want everybody to be successful. But currently, I don't feel like um there there's obviously some lack of communication on what the expectation is with quasi judicial. And we need to make sure staff is communicating that out or has documentation to give to say, this is what's expected with quasi judicial. And we need to make sure staff is communicating that out or has documentation to give to say this is what's expected with quasi judicial. Awesome.
Noted.
Mayor, I just might add as well, if I may, that it cuts both ways because it is very much in the interest of the applicant. To have a good, solid, clean record. And there are lots of cases going to our appellate courts from local quasi judicial hearings. Just because the law expects you to be court like. But that's, that's, that's a pretty huge expectation of local governments that are, that are governed by volunteers and who aren't lawyers. So it would, it would hurt the applicant just as much if the record was poor. And opposition came out filed an appeal and your decision were overturned on that side of the ledger.
Gotcha.
That's all I just.
Thank you. Yes, sir. All right. Wishes of the council. We've got to move on.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve SUP application 2020-98-SUP Champion East special use permit. And this motion is based on the following findings. Number one, the application will not materially endanger the public health or safety. If located where proposed and developed according to the plans as submitted and approved. The application meets all the required specifications and conforms to the standards and practices of sound land use planning in the town code of ordinances or other applicable regulations. Number three, the application will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property and will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or other neighborhood uses. Number four, the application will not adversely affect the adopted plans and policies of the town or violate. The character of existing standards for development of the adjacent properties. I also want to make sure that we mentioned that this motion would include six conditions as listed in the staff report.
Second, we have a motion and a second for approval of SUP application 2020-98 SUP Champion East special use permit. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, up next under old business is the award design build Riverwalk on the noose.
Good evening, council, mayor. The item before you tonight is going to be a project that's going to be managed, excuse me, let me start back over. Joshua Baird, engineering director, covering tonight for Jonathan Jacobs, assistant town engineer is going to be managing and covering this project. During some routine inspections in the past, three bridges along Clayton's Riverwalk and New Screenway. Were found to be nearing the end of their lifespan and needing replacement. On November 7th, town council of last year, town council approved a capital project budget ordinance. An amount of a million and a half dollars to fund the replacement of the two or the three bridges. Shown here in the location down behind the Riverwood subdivision near the river. Staff have looked at this and evaluated different delivery, project delivery methods and recommend design build. This is different than the typical design bid and then build where you completed design with a consultant, you bid the job. And then go to construction with a contractor. Benefits of this, looking at this specific project are the ability to go ahead and bring a contractor on board with the design team. These are deep down by the river. Access is going to be difficult. Construction is going to be difficult. So go ahead and getting the contractor on board, having them alongside the designer in terms of looking at materials, constructability, access and all as we work through this. Is, is one of the reasons as well as when we start getting into design. Being able to go ahead and order and procure some materials in terms of the bridge. In terms of their schedule savings, in terms of being able to get certain items procured while we are still finishing and button up the final design. As well as some of the permitting associated with it. We also recommend proceeding with all three, just due to access, it's going to be difficult to do one at a time. And from terms of mobilization, go ahead and completing and replacing all three at one time is the best interest we see with the, with the dollars here. State statutes does allow municipalities utilize the design build method. It does require the establishments of six criteria, why the design build project delivery method is the best fit for the particular project. You can find those, they have been provided in the packet. Staff has solicited for design build teams. We've received four submittals and gone through and reviewed those and recommend. Moving forward with the team led by Crowder Construction Company and the design consultant, AMT. Found them to be the most qualified in terms of a scoring matrix that was created. Staff recommend entering into the design build contract with this team. The contract has been reviewed by procurement and contracts manager and is based on typical industry standard DBIA template documents. The phase one, the pre-construction leading up to a GMP, the total services fee is 296,086 dollars and 60 cents. Staff request town council approve the design build contract, the design build criteria, the six elements. And then also authorize the town manager or designated to execute the contract for the phase one pre-construction services. As well as any amendments to, any amendments are required prior to that GMP milestone to get us to that GMP. Staff will bring back before council a GMP amendment once the design is far enough along where we can establish a GMP and begin ordering some materials. So with that, I'll take any questions.
All right, questions or comments for staff? All right. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 2022-02.
Again.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of Resolution 2022-02. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Joshua. Up next is the mid-year budget discussion.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Rich Capola, interim town manager. As was established last year during the initiation of COVID, we started this mid-year budget review. Really to make sure that the assumptions that were made and adopted in the original budget. Held true for at least through the first six months of the year and then give us an opportunity to see how we may have to adjust based on those numbers. Really want to thank the staff, in particular, Robert Mackay, who really got his head into all the numbers. But really all the department heads and other supportive staff that went through this. It really has changed the way that we're doing our budget calendar at this point because we are getting some information that we used to get later in the process, much earlier, particularly year end estimates. So with that, rolling into the presentation, the first slide that you'll see there is the budget process. As you can see, we're really just entering next fiscal year's budget process. However, this mid-year budget is setting the table for a lot of decisions that will have to be made as part of that FY23 budget. Particularly where, when we're looking at revenue, either gains or shortfalls, as well as any projects or any other initiatives that aren't going to be able to get completed during this current fiscal year. That may need to be rolled over or considered in next fiscal year. Couple of dates to highlight, as you see up there, really from a staff level, about 30 days from now or a little more. We will be receiving the full departmental requests for their initial budget submittals. Obviously, many of the department heads and other staff have been keeping a list for quite some time. Some of which we've got some considerations here at the mid-year level that we may want to talk about. Accelerating prior to the FY23 budget. But really over the next several weeks and months, we're going to be start crafting that FY23 budget for your all's consideration. The goal, as I should note there, is obviously by statute, we have to have an adopted budget prior to July 1st of every year. So our hope is that by that second meeting in June, we do have consensus on an adopted budget. So moving forward into some of the snapshots, again, a lot of work done here by Mr. Mackay. Effectively, when we started this mid-year review process, we had five months worth of data, so, so we had to make some adjustments and assumptions here. But all in all, a lot of our assumptions, most of our assumptions that were made with, with the initial creation of the budget are holding true. And in some cases are actually, we have some gains. One, one item to note, a couple of items on the top here, just to orient you. We've got revenues across the top of this expenditure is a lot at the bottom. The first column is the adopted budget that went into effect July 1st. The second column for the amended budget are, is the budget with any additions that were made since July 1st through council action. And then the estimated amount is what we anticipate based on the input from our department heads, as well as, you know, a review of our financial folks. What the true, or what our expected year end would be. So a couple of things to highlight, on the adverbal tax side, we are a little bit ahead, particularly from higher vehicle tax intake. The real star of the show right now seems to be sales tax, as you can see in that next column. We are projecting that we will be a million dollars to the plus in overall collections from that. And then a couple of items that you'll see in the negative, parks and rec programming with COVID. Both the limitations that we can have in terms of programming as well as the user ship. Unfortunately, we did not come out of COVID as, as strong as we were hoping to be able to have those things. So those assumptions for certain programming have had to be reconfigured. And as well as the grants and donation, unfortunately, our fire department did not receive a safer grant this year. However, as was discussed last year as part of the budget, the positions that we're, we were looking to cover with that safer grant are still needed. So we are moving forward with filling those and I believe we're well along the way as Chief Sutton had mentioned last, last meeting. The other item there is the geo debt. Obviously, we sold bonds for the, for the parks and recs, so that is recognized as a revenue. So overall, we are projecting about a little over $3 million above our original, excuse me, our original revenues for the, for the general fund. That being said, on the expenditure side, we have a little bit more higher salary costs right now. Some of the other items that we've discussed, Greenway, you heard about the three Greenways bridges that we're going to be replacing. Those did have some immediate needs that we needed to get out there as well as some other items that need to be addressed, so that was an unforeseen cost. We did have the, you know, the, the general obligation bonds is netted out at the bottom there as, as expenditure since that is being used to cover. Oh, excuse me. Nope, wrong one on that one. That general obligation bond was the action that was one of the items on the consent agenda today, which was to pay off some outstanding debt that we had. Apologize for that. And then we have a open space grant that will not be recognized this, this current fiscal year, will be pushed to next year. So all in all, once you net out the pluses on the revenue side and some of the minuses on the expenditures. We're projecting a little over a million dollars in additional revenue that could be utilized for other initiatives with regards to the fund balance, or excuse me, general fund. Any questions on that before I move forward? All right. On the water and sewer side, similar table, again, from our ARPA funds, originally we were anticipating about 7.2 million, or excuse me, 7, 7.2 million. And I believe it came in, actually our share was about 7.9, so we are utilizing those funds as was previously decided by the council. Specifically for water and sewer projects, as obviously we have a lot of needs in that area right now. And it is a very straightforward way to utilize those funds from a procurement standpoint. Permits and fees, we are seeing higher system development fees. That's just a direct result of the growth that we're seeing right now. And then there were some slight additions to surplus property in, in water and sewer. On the expenditure side, salaries and benefits continue to be, we're chasing those. The biggest negative that you'll see there at $368,000 is related to our sludge disposal. The byproduct from our wastewater treatment plant does have to be land applied. The cost of everything have gone up significantly as of late, so unfortunately, we do have a gap to fill there. However, the good news being between some of the gains on the projected revenues. We are still anticipating a fund balance addition by the end of fiscal year of approximately $370,000. Moving on to the electric fund, very similar situation, we're seeing a little bit higher fees. We did not issue any debt for, for any of our projects this year, so that revenue is not realized. Obviously, some of those projects will be either deferred or delayed just based on, you know, project management capability or being able to get, you know, get, get. Procure the, the different materials that need to be utilized or that be, are needed for the projects, excuse me. On the expenditure side, we are seeing higher costs with all our contracted work. We do, we do contract out a significant portion of our electric operation sites, so we are chasing that as well. All in all, the anticipated final number, as you'll see there, does appear to be negative approximately half a million dollars. That would be, that would require a fund balance appropriation by the end of the fiscal year to ensure that we are compliant. One thing to note there, we did not adjust the total cost of what we expect to pay for all power for the year. Right now, we are tracking as if we will not have to spend that entire line item, which may make it so that it is awash by the end of the fiscal year. But the bean counters will be continuing to monitor that and we will certainly keep you apprised of any concerns or changes of that. So specifically, just again, that amended budget column, items in the general fund that were added were the general obligation bonds that were issued and redeemed. The Greenway Bridge replacements, that 1.5 million Joshua was just talking about. The fire truck replacement that we discussed last council meeting and when we move forward with the action today. The mid-year staff bonus that was very appreciated by everyone. We, the previous council did appropriate a million dollars towards upfitting the property at Loop Road and Cover Bridge. To be able to move towards making that into a playable surface for, for athletics. We have the Clayton High School town joint use agreement that was added mid-year, or excuse me, just after the adoption of the budget. The information technology transition, that million dollars that was put in for both people and equipment. As well as some property acquisition down adjacent to the police department. So those are actions that have already been completed and are incorporated into those numbers. On the operation budget adjustment side, we have had some staff adjustments that we've done. We have seen some health insurance increases that the town is responsible for, but we've been able to absorb those. We realigned our budget for some of our crucial projects, preliminary stuff that was maybe specifically put in the initial budget. Through different changes, some space upfits and that kind of thing, we've had to readjust and reprioritize to make sure that we're keeping with our needs. So that's all been done and already accounted for in those numbers. And then conversion of our HR format and both our, everything from applying for a job through your HR personnel files. All the way through to your time sheets is going to be transitioning to that NeoGov platform. It has a big training aspect to it as well. So that, that was done prior to, excuse me, yeah, after the adoption of the budget. So all those again incorporated currently. A few considerations and our intent is not to really get into the depth of these tonight, but just want to put them on your radar. We've got some other meetings and obviously the retreat coming up in February that we'd really like to delve into what we could potentially prioritize. So that, that 1.8 million of potential, or 1.1 million of potential surplus on the general obligation, excuse me, on the general fund side could be correctly prioritized. We have some staffing needs. Right now with the wastewater treatment plant moving along, as well as with COVID, we are seeing, seeing some of what we thought were our minimum staffing capabilities being stressed at this point. So we do have a need to start bringing on at least one more wastewater treatment plant operator. Great news for night to see the ladies are moving forward and also Chad, who just, who wasn't able to be here tonight. Still moving forward, getting their certifications to be able to operate those, those facilities. But at some point, we just need more people to be able to help keep up. That is a 24 hour day operation, so we want to make sure that the water flowing and the toilets are flushing all the time. We do have a fire engineer position that may need to be needed. That's a staffing issue based on a personnel, a personnel issue. And then also a warehouse coordinator position. We're reviewing that operation as a whole and looking at potentially moving some people around to see if we can't get some backup and support there. But we do have some, some capacity issues in terms of being able to have the warehouse staff to the level we need at this point. So those are positions we may need, want to talk about before FY23's budget. Addition, water liquefaction project, we have a lot of space needs right now. One of the items that we're looking at too is a training area. Turns out for the mobile trailers that we would utilize as onsite offices and meeting space during the wastewater treatment plant. There's a very small delta with regards to how much it will cost us to lease that, that, that facility for the two and a half, three years of the project versus just purchasing it outright. So it is a consideration we'd like to recommend moving forward with purchase. That would be obviously absorbed in the cost of the project. However, if we were to utilize that for a general fund initiative. Those general fund dollars could then be utilized to pay for that, pay for that unit. Property acquisitions, you've heard us say that we need new fire stations, new police stations, as well as things like operations centers, expanded parks and libraries. So we are identifying some, some key properties that we may want to have consider and purchase of. And obviously that's going to be based on, we got to get it when we can get it. Some facility improvements just regard to the space needs of, of the different staff. Some facility improvements just regard to the space needs of the different staff that we're adding, as well as one of the big considerations, paving with that big number of a million dollars. I think Blake had previously, a couple of months ago, had some conversations with the paving project, really, just to get caught up with where we are in the paving needs, we should be putting somewhere in the $2 to $3 million a year on the ground. Right now, we've been budgeting about $1 million and a half. So that would be a significant amount of gain that we could make if we could go ahead and appropriate some of those funds to advance some of the paving operations. And that's another quick hit that we are staffed up and teed up to go ahead and get on the ground. So with that, a few final thoughts. We obviously, you know, made some projections through the year, but ultimately, with where we think we're going to be, we're going to have a healthy reserve fund. We did have the big win a few months ago with Standard and Poor's giving us an upgrade to an AA plus rating. The mid-year budget does reflect basically what I think everybody sees on a daily basis. You know, we're growing. We got a lot of needs in the community, but hopefully, we're being able to catch up or at least make some gains on on keeping up with the with that growth. The sales tax revenues, again, significantly higher than normally. We don't want to get too reliant on that number, just because we do want to make sure we're keeping a conservative look at what our revenues will be, but we will continue to track the progress of of those sales tax revenues. We are continuing to recruit regularly. Obviously, as those space needs are getting addressed, we're able to bring new staff on to 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 fill some of these positions that are previously approved. So we're excited about those coming on. And then the capital projects for the CIP, we are moving forward. Joshua and his team have been taking the reins and really addressing and advancing all those projects. We've got a lot of needs, we understand that, but these projects do take time and dollars. And that's been one of the biggest challenges right now, is trying to keep an eye on where those dollars are going, particularly with where the market is. But ultimately, we are adapting and addressing those as quickly as possible. So with that, I think that's the that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to take them. Robert, myself, Lee and Doris, Greg, we've all been spending a lot of time kind of getting our heads into these numbers, but I feel like we're sitting in good shape and we got a lot of good good things to talk about at the retreat to potentially move forward.
Yeah, I think it's very, I think it's a really good update. You know, obviously, you know, we don't want to see any shortfalls, but things do happen. But to look at, you know, where the gains are and how they exceed what we were even projecting, that's a wonderful offset. So I think it's a great job, you know, on everyone's part. Questions or comments for staff? Ms. Archer?
I have a comment, thank you. I really liked that list of, I don't know what it was titled, but the kind of priorities, the thoughts, because nothing on there seemed really flashy or, you know, but it was very meat and potatoes, very solid, very well thought out, and and I really appreciate that. So thank you.
I appreciate it. All right. Thank you.
Do you have staff report up here? Okay.
Well, one thing, from a staff report standpoint, with regards to COVID, obviously, the numbers are continuing to be challenging. So we are maintaining all of our protocols as we currently are, as we discussed previously. Reminder, we are starting to prepare the agenda for the retreat in February. So hopefully, by the end of the week, we'll be circulating that for you all to observe what we've heard as some top items that you'd like to speak or discuss, as well as gaining the additional feedback for for items that we may have not included. So that's it for me today.
Thank you. To his report, to his point, counsel on retreat, I had a wonderful meeting with town clerk and deputy manager to discuss the agenda for the retreat, and it is shaping up fantastic. So when you, when they send this information to you, you scan through it. If there's anything that's not on there that you want on there, just let them know. And I can't guarantee you it'll be a specific line item that we discuss, but we will discuss it in other elements of what's on the agenda. So it won't go, it won't go, you know, unnoticed or undiscussed or whatever, but just check it out. I'm really excited about what's going to be going on for this town council retreat. Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Gill and our town clerk. Excited. All right, town attorney, staff report.
No report, Ms. Mayor, thank you very much. I enjoy hearing your all's opinions.
Thank you. We always enjoy having you here too. Town clerk?
No reports, thank you.
Lee Barbie, interim deputy manager. I'm representing Rusty Clausen tonight, Public Works. Just as Chief Sutton come to you at last council meeting and and offered up some concerns about a fire truck operations, police services has a dump truck that's in the future CIP. And in looking ahead, we're finding out that dump trucks, other flatbed trucks are hard to come by also. And the research they've done, they found a demo truck that'll be available probably in April that would fit operational needs. If they had to order that same truck in next year's budget, if it was approved in the CIP and in the budget process, that truck could be out and not delivered till late summer of '23. So Rusty didn't have all the information together tonight to bring you for budget numbers. They're still researching that, they're still trying to research the truck, but they did want to make you aware that we need to be looking into it because the truck that they're replacing is a 20-year-old truck. So I just want to put that on your radar. He also notified me today that that a piece of equipment that we have in the capital outlay for this year, and we delayed the purchase to a little later later on in the year, we're now finding out that that item may be delayed also. So I've got him researching any lease options or rentals that may be turned back in that we could buy as used, but a newer piece of equipment. So we're having to do a lot of research on vehicle and equipment replacements moving forward with economy as it is.
So let me just make sure I understand this. We got some things scheduled to purchase, but getting them made and built and delivered is going to take a little bit longer than we expected. So we need machinery or trucks or vehicle equipment in the meantime to help, because we have a 20-year piece of equipment or vehicle, we got to have something in between time.
There's two ways you can look at this. An opportunity to buy demo vehicle with a new warranty. It won't be available probably sometime first of April. That would do the job. That vehicle is budgeted in next year's CIP. But if we wait till next year to order it, we could be looking at late '23 before we can take delivery. They just had a dump truck that arrived for Water Resources. I think it was like 14 or 18 months out.
Wow.
Kind of during COVID, pre-COVID, they just received it about a month or two ago and put it to service. So we need to be looking a little further ahead in in some of our purchasing plans for vehicles.
Yes.
And if opportunity here, we could get a a year ahead if we move on it in time. Hopefully, by the next council, we can bring you some numbers back.
Sounds good. Questions? All right, thank you, sir. Any other staff? All right, I'll now open the floor for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and just take your name for the record.
All right. Good evening. Emily Beddingfield, I am here this evening as or in my role as chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And I wanted to note that me being here is part of an expanded and forthcoming effort for us as an advisory board to have more communication with y'all as the council. We're an advisory board, not just to the Parks and Rec Department, but to you guys as a council. So one thing we're doing is actively looking at ways to ensure that the items and topics that we discuss and vote on at those meetings are coming straight to y'all and you're not having to just go look at the minutes from the previous month's meeting in order to find out what happened. Of course, we have liaisons. Avery is an excellent liaison to our board and a wonderful contributor at our meetings, but I think we can take it a step further. Similar, I was inspired a bit by Ruth and her commitment to having ongoing communication with the downtown parking task force and the council. So I think, you know, I'm always learning and looking for ways to get better. So hopefully, this is a way we can do that as a board and me as a chair, representing that board. So tonight, I just wanted to bring one item that we had voted on at the last meeting because it affects a decision that was made by the previous council for the Loop Road property. It's gone under various names, the Covered Bridge River Park, North Clayton Community Park, Loop Road Park, and I think just North Park, depending on what document you're looking at. I handed out a document to y'all that is back from, I think, 2017 or 18, when the property was purchased. As part of that purchase of the 100-plus acre property there, where of course, this is our second Greenway entrance as you head out of town on Cover Bridge Road, and it's that giant piece of property with the pond that abuts that. There was a master plan put together with a lot of public input. The council was involved. This was back when Larry Bailey was our Parks and Recreation Director, and the document that I handed you tonight represents the outcome of that effort. They basically talked a lot to the community, put together the items that people had identified. There was a need and still is a need for a passive park with a lot of passive elements like trails, dog park, you know, shelter, you know, obviously, there's shelters and recreation, basically ways for people to enjoy the outdoors, sort of building on that concept of it being a Greenway trailhead. So of course, there was the recent decision, ordinance 2021-11-08, that was voted on by the previous group of council to allot $1 million to fund soccer fields at this park We discussed this as a board because we remembered that there was a master plan in place for this property, and we discussed that overall, we're supportive of the soccer fields. We we understand the need, we understand the kind of weird history of how that decision was made, and that we're going to be filling a need for the town. Additionally, the location where the soccer fields have been presented in a map that was, I believe, shown to the council at some point, is in the location where there was an event lawn slash multipurpose field. That same basically sized field is now being located at municipal park under as part of the renovations that are ongoing now. So as a board, we felt comfortable with sort of replacing that field with these soccer fields. However, the other part of that conversation we discussed was wanting to make sure that we're honoring our existing master plan for that property because it's about only five years old. It was put together with a lot of public input, with all the members of the board and the council at that time. And so we made a vote to recommend that the Parks and Recreation Department proceed to, let me, let me read how I how I wrote it, recommend that the consultant who completed the initial design be retained to update that design and include the soccer fields. A lot of that in is partially because I'm a planner. I like to think ahead. I like to make sure that we're planning ahead, that as we incorporate new design elements, we're taking into account the existing design elements that we planned previously, or that we're maybe modifying and planning for the future. We want to make sure the board was very concerned that we, as we put those soccer fields in, that we're not just looking at the soccer field component, we're thinking about the entire future of that park. And I do want to note, there is existing funding, is my understanding from the Parks and Recreation Director Scott, who could not be here this evening. He had another meeting to be at to talk about park stuff. But there is existing funding within his budget that can cover this design. He feels very confident he could retain Sage Design, who was the consultant who did that work, and have them incorporate this and look at the other elements of the existing design. We want to make sure that those two, the very passive sort of hiking trail, dog park uses, and the very active soccer park uses are harmonious, and that as we put an element like that in, we're really looking at how are our trails connecting? Are we thinking about our bathroom locations? Are we thinking about parking? Are we thinking about grading, vegetation retention, all these different things that you have to think about when you look, especially at a park of this size, and just really wanting to look ahead. So I don't know if that's going to sort of come before you all in the near future or not, but I wanted you to be aware, since again, it does impact something that was voted on by recent council members and is going to be moving forward in some capacity. And so I guess I would just, I don't know if I need any sort of action or anything like that from y'all, but would definitely just look for your support in that sort of forward thinking and continuing to think holistically about our park properties. You know, that property was purchased as a park, a design was made. Let's make sure that we're honoring that design and honoring ourselves by continuing to plan and design that property to best serve our citizens now and in the future. So and I think that's all, and I look forward to having more of these kind of conversations with you guys, either via email or coming to these meetings or one-on-one, of course.
So call things for me. One, this type of presentation needs to be quarterly. This type of presentation, Mr. Manager, needs to be one of those, you know, hour prior to council educational forums, concepts that we've been talking about. It is wonderful to hear from Park and Recreation Advisory Board. You turned on a huge light for me because, yes, we did create this master plan for that property. And when we had the discussions about creating the front portion of that property into soccer fields, it never even, I did not connect the dots at the time that we already have a master plan for this property. So the the more quarterly communication that we can have with this board, the better this council will be served because we can't think of everything and remember everything. So it's appreciative when people come and say, hey, don't forget, we invested tax dollars on this master plan study. Here's what the vision is. If we're going to modify it, let's modify the plan. And then where are we on the plan in implementing what we what we decided five years ago is what was best use of this property? And one reason that this is passionate for me is because something on that property was going to be some sort of outdoor educational center being named for Steve Biggs, for longtime manager of Steve Biggs. And that was his whole gig outside. And so that was that was part of the process with this plan for this property. So it's just wonderful that you guys have taken the initiative, whomever, to come and talk to us, to give us an update. And I'm asking that we continue this on a quarterly basis, and hopefully, this would be something that we would meet with you guys an hour before a scheduled town council meeting and become more informed, more well-educated, and have some more question answer with you guys one-on-one. That would be awesome.
I love that. I think it'll make us better as a board as well, the more we talk and have that communication, and then we're getting guidance from you all. It's it's great. Yeah, we welcome that.
All right, anyone else? All right.
Thank you so much.
Oh, I'm sorry. How many acres is this property?
It's either 100 or 120. It's big.
It's big.
Can we get an emailed copy of this, or I'll reach out?
Of course, yeah, I'd be happy to send out an email copy.
Anyone else?
Yes, the only thing I will say to this is, yeah, you guys are an awesome board. And I think, you know, having genuine conversations and genuine discussions without, you know, just dealing with what's in front of us and not thinking about what has happened in the past as well, focusing on our master plan, you know, that is going to get us where we need to be, and I think that is going to be concrete for moving us forward. So that should take care of, like, you know, any issues, you know, kind of going ahead of that, just sticking to the master plan.
Awesome.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I appreciate your comments and, yes, news like that. I'd like to have an advance as well. Like, the biggest caution I want to have here is I think all of our master plans need to be reevaluated. We do have some significant capital projects going on with the Parks and Rec right now that we don't know if we can actually fully fund. The other item with regards to the design, this was now brought up as part of our midyear review, so those funds may have been utilized to offset that that revenue shortfall. So I'd have to have a conversation with Robert before we move forward with any sort of commitment of funds at this point. So obviously, more conversation to be had at the board level, as well as with the advisory board, but we can bring that forward based on our prioritization discussions as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you both. All right, anyone else? All right, no one else wishing for comments? I'll turn it over to council for comments. No comments. Mr. Thompson?
I just want to say
I just want to say that I continue to be extremely impressed with staff, especially our management team and the executive team for their leadership, for their hiring choices. I think you're absolutely, all of our department heads and leadership team are putting the best people in place to do the job. And I've been really impressed with all of our management teams lately and what they've been doing. I won't speak for a second about board appointments. When we appoint people to citizen boards and to be advisory boards to us, these boards should be reflective of the community. They should be inclusive and representative of all of the town. And recently, I know I have, and I think some of our other council members have received a lot of phone calls, texts, emails, wanting to meet from, I'll just call it special groups, advocating for their special interest. And I've had probably some of the most disappointing conversations I've ever had with some of these groups, questioning the integrity of the process and questioning the, some of the choices made. And I just want to say, as far as I'm concerned, we've got a process that's working. We've got a staff that's working extremely hard and making hard decisions. But one thing I'm proud of is that the group that made this slate of choices to present us made selections based on a diverse group of our community and representative of all of our community and our ECJ. And I just want to commend staff. It seems like lately, everybody wants to complain about something, and everybody's got, you know, these, I call it the special groups, like, be loud. And I just appreciate your commitment and your diligence to bring forth people to us and to represent us that represent the entire community. And I'm very thankful for that.
And I just want to echo what Mayor Pro Tem Thompson had to say is that, you know, for council to ask for more information from staff is not questioning your judgment. It's actually just helping us as a council to be able to communicate this out to the citizens on what the process is and how it works. Because we've never really had as strong a focus on the selection of our advisory boards as we have now. And that is really and truly because our advisory boards play a much, much greater role than what they used to in Clayton's history, all of them, but especially these that are regulatory boards who, you know, create judgments for development and the like. So I appreciate the fact that it's okay for council and myself to, you know, ask you to justify your recommendations. It isn't because we don't have faith in you or like what you've done. It's because it allows us opportunity to go out into the public and explain to them, when we see them, how this process works and why the results are the way they are. And so I'm proud of all the great work that we're all doing. Thank you. Definitely. Anyone else? All right. Rich, I know you wanted to talk about winter weather. Hold on a minute. I called on Rich.
Sorry. Oh, you're. Oh, sorry. So I know we talked about the pedestrian bridges. There's one off Amelia Church Road that is part of the greenway system, I suppose, and there's a pretty, I don't know if it's blocked off now. I didn't know if, we know the status on that?
I'll ask Joshua to come up and give a quick update.
Yeah, Joshua Baird, engineering director again. Yes, there is a section of greenway basically from the Lionsgate Community Center back towards Shed Boat Lane. In conversations with the HOA, we all agree that it is a privately maintained section. We as a town were never dedicated the bridge or that section. We have been in a conversation dating back to budget process last year with previous town council. Town council did, as part of the budget, approve $50,000 to work with the HOA in terms of a solution. The bridge was deemed unsafe by our building inspections department and was closed. So it is closed. Is it unsafe to the public? They do have that authority there. We do see a solution that we can, instead of a bridge, we see a solution, we can bring that trail closer to the road back of Curd there. I believe that there's a solution moving forward without a bridge. We have been in conversations with the HOA and some representatives from the developer out there in terms of solution and made a proposal to them. I sent a formal proposal that we as the town would handle construction. If the HOA actually did a design and permitted the encroachment, then we would administer the construction of that project with the funds that we're allocating this year's budget. We continue to work with them to try to come up with a solution. Had an update just about a couple of weeks ago. Still working on some internal conversations. I have not received confirmation that that is an acceptable proposal, but we do keep working towards that and trying to get that. We do see it as a connection that does benefit the greater public and not just the residents of Lionsgate there. So we are open to taking that on. Obviously, we would want to take it on in a condition that is acceptable, and we don't want to take on a maintenance burden that we're going to have to drop some, a lot of dollars into. There are some sections outside the greenway, again, that we would be willing to take on, but improvements are needed, and we are willing to split the cost. 50/50 was in the proposal with them. So waiting to hear back, but hoping that in the next couple of weeks, I'll be able to bring a formal agreement in terms of exactly what that looks like, their design, and then we actually handle construction of it, so.
Okay. Thank you. I have one other comment or question too, and Joshua, it might be for you. I had two residents, one at Lakeside Drive and one at Woodcrest, in that older subdivision that's being surrounded by the newer subdivision off of Old Highway 70, Shotwell Road, if y'all know where I'm talking about. I don't know, has staff looked at anything? I guess the two residents reached out to me, said that they were, I guess, in the meeting, the public meeting, they were promised a berm, or they're just questions, or they're concerns about the flow from their community into the other, especially the homeowners back up to the newer division and subdivision. And I guess I was going to try to get them some sort of answer back on what that's going to look like or what was committed in the site plans.
Sir, yeah. I'll let the planning director speak to that. I think they've worked through some related to the berm.
So related to the berm question around the buffer, I've looked into that and actually I've talked to a couple of different property owners out there as well. While there was discussion of a berm, it appeared in the neighborhood meeting minutes and may have even been discussion of a berm in the council meeting minutes, that never did make it into final conditions as part of the approval. And so the approved plan and the approved conditions of approval of that subdivision do not require a berm for that exterior buffer. So what I, what we, what staff has told the property owners is that we are, you know, continuing to work with that developer on a couple of other items, I think, too. And that's one of the things we are planning to bring up to their development team is, you know, the concern from the neighborhood about lack of a buffer and to see what may be able to be done at this point by the developer. However, there's nothing that the town itself can require the developer to do.
Okay. Thank you. Just for a follow-up question, I mean, if it's a, was that a quasi judicial case? And if it's, I thought that would be covered maybe.
It was. That development was originally approved as a special use permit because it is town homes. But the final conditions of approval, just mentioned, just referenced a landscape buffer, they did not reference requirement for a berm. And the approved plans that were approved as part of that SUP do not show a berm as part of that buffer.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any type of finality so I can reach back out to the homeowners or?
Not yet. Where staff is still working to get in contact with the developer and try and see what the possibilities may be.
Thank you.
Okay. Rich?
If I could add to that, I know that that's kind of like a gut punch to me, and I hope that's something that up here we use as a cautionary tale because I have been out to that neighborhood, and that's just a real shame that those people don't have the buffer that they thought they were going to get. I don't know if any of you have been out there lately, but yeah, that's all I'll say. Just hopefully we can learn from that.
Ms. Thompson?
I agree. I think it's a tremendous, I guess, learning experience of what we approve, what we think in our mind we're approving and what we get. You know, we're told landscape buffer, things like that. We picture something real, intangible, and then what we get is essentially nonexistent. I do want to give kudos to staff, this awareness, especially with this development that Mr. Casey's talking about. Staff has been proactive in this. And, you know, I've got to give kudos to Chief Barbie for months ago saying, something's not right with this. Let's go look at it. And so I think we've got the awareness, and I feel like, I feel comfortable that staff is trying to work to come to a good solution that'll help these homeowners because I hope that the conversations with the developer are fruitful and that they're aware of our, maybe that what we believe we're getting, not what we're getting. And hopefully they can come to some sort of, do something to help these folks out because, as Ms. Archer said, it's a shame.
All right. Anyone else?
Sorry, Mayor. One item that I forgot to mention earlier. First, I just wanted to say some kudos and thanks to all the staff that worked this past weekend with the winter weather. We had relatively minimal issues. We did have obviously a few accidents and some street work that had to be done. But all in all, police, fire, streets, water, sewer, electric, everybody was on top of their game. So I just really appreciate everybody's response, as well as all the citizens who used good judgment and really didn't go out too early and go out in unsafe conditions. We are tracking the storm that is coming forward here towards the end of this week. We'll have an initial meeting tomorrow, but this one does look like it has the potential to cause us a little bit more havoc than the previous one. So as those details come a little bit more clear to us, we will provide updates to staff or, excuse me, to the council as well as how we plan on moving forward with operations as well as staffing. So just wanted to put that on your radar.
Good. And to that point, thank you, Rich. To Public Information Office, thank you for the great work on social media and letting people know what is going on. I was driving in from Atlanta, and I could keep up with what was happening in Clayton. And I think people really go to that for a resource, especially when we start dealing with electrical outages and just acknowledging the fact that the town is aware there's an electrical outage, that we have crews on the way or on site or whatever. All of that information coming out has been well-received by the public, and I appreciate it. All right. Anything else?
Yes. I just want to say thank you to everyone and to our new advisory board members as well. I appreciate you guys and welcome you. You know, it's going to be an exciting new journey for us, and looking at new perspectives and new ideas is gonna, it's gonna be good, and I'm looking forward to the conversation, conversations that we are going to be having.
Absolutely. All right. Anything else to come before this board? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Me.
Motion to adjourn.
So you're second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.